Ready to get restarted. Thank you all being here tonight for our regular council meeting of September 28th, 2017. We do have a revised agenda. Revision being the addition of a public hearing for ordinance 1055. I trust it has been properly advertised and all the rest. Alright, so that would be item 9A, the first item under new business. The ordinance itself will be for first reading as item B. Alright, and with that, would like to ask Mr. Manning to come forward and lead us in our indication in place of the flag. Everyone please stand.
Let's remember, as you said earlier, sorry to interrupt you, mother, I didn't know anything about the mayor name until I go. So we'll all remember her prior. Our heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight, Lord, we ask you, Lord, to touch our attorneys' families tonight, Lord, and all his loved ones. And Father, we know that, Lord, you're the only one who can keep us going. Father, we touch our council tonight, and the mayor, and city manager, all of them are both involved in this meeting tonight, Father. Lord, help us to be what you want us to be, not what we want, but God, what you want, no lie, in Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge of faith, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Jay, put that roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Ms. Moore Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Dalton. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City manager Miller.
Here.
City attorney Litch.
Here.
Okay, I trust everyone has had opportunity to review the items in the consent agenda. Those would be minutes from the September 14th TAP grand public hearing, the September 14th agenda work session, the September 14th regular council meeting, and then our July 2017 financial statement. We have a motion in regard to these items in the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the standard agenda along with the financial statement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. If we could have the roll call, please.
Ms. Moore Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
I abstain.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Williams did inform me prior to the meeting that he would probably be abstaining. He was not here for those meetings, so good reason, good reason. Alright, at this time, we will entertain the communication from citizens. If you are a citizen or a business owner here in the city of East Ridge and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so, you'll come to one of the microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. We have no one who, no one has signed in, so if there's someone just... Absolutely, you are more than welcome to. Good to see you.
Good to see you. I'm Curtis Lecter, live at 6822 Buell Drive in East Ridge. I know probably this is not on my agenda, and I'm probably getting the car before the horse, but sometime I would say, you know, if you get the car, then the horse can't run away, if you get in front of, in front of the horse, I'm down. But I've been reading where I think coming up again is about beer in the park for special events. I lived in East Ridge for forty-five plus years, and I live right up at the park. Probably go through there three to four times a day, in and out. It's a beautiful park, family-oriented park. And I know this probably will come before the council some point in time, because I've been hearing a lot of talk about it. You know, the park there is, the kids cross that road, if you go through there a lot, they're crossing that road all the time. And I don't really think that that's a place for beer, even if for a special event. A lot of time, there's other events going on there, even when you have special events. I don't think that, I don't believe that the revenue from that would be, that break is going to hit East Ridge a lot, it'd probably benefit whoever's going to put the van on for sale. But then you've got the possibility of drunk drivers out on the road coming through the park, and I think that's something we don't need. So I'd just like to ask you to consider when that does come forward, and I'm sure it'll probably come forward at some point in time, to not vote for beer in the park. I think we just need to keep that as a family park, because it's a beautiful park, pretty green space, they can get out, do whatever. So really consider not voting for that if it comes forward, and I thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. It's always good to see you. Do we have another? Let's see, do we have one? So we will move to communication from council members. Mr. Cagle, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things here.
Yes, sir.
I called Ms. Miller the other day and asked her to give me an update on the Carter situation, and asked her to tell me how many people have on writing at this time, and applications, and so here she has. I find that it's, it's going to work a lot today.
Yes, Councilmember Cagle and Mayor and Council, yes, we did run into each other the other day on my way back from Nashville, and had an opportunity to talk to the Carter folks over the past couple of days. We had a complete street workshop downtown Chattanooga, which was very interesting, by the way. But here is the latest numbers, and this is not including the applications we still have to turn in that we've got at the front desk. But they had seven new applications received, and one of those was actually a Chattanooga resident that decided to move to East Ridge, so just for the benefit of being able to use this service. They've had so far a total of thirty-five trips. Thirty-four of those trips were to and from work, and one of those was a trip to the social security office. So that's right now kind of slow, we just had the hometown news come out a long ago with the UOL procedures at home. And we're hoping that because that was advertised at the very front of the cover, that we're going to start seeing an increase in that. So anytime any of the council would like me to update that at a meeting, I'd be more than happy to. Just if you'll let me know ahead of time, I'll make sure to make sure the numbers are here with me.
Very good.
Here's my, I got another, are we having a housing authority meeting?
There is one tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM.
10:00?
10:00 AM.
No, is it here?
Is it right here? I don't know who said that, okay.
Alright, my next question is, our state manager mill about to find our border regions. It's kind of depressing, but then it's a little depressing. The way I read this thing is that we got a state distribution of $2,64,575, a few cents. The amount we paid out to Exit 1 LLC was $1,133,953,254, which come out of $2 million, which leads us, our part, $930,622. Now, and also, this way Mr. Norwood out, I'd like him to explain about what we're going to be losing next year, running it up this year, and the way I read this thing is going to be going down next year by the way of the food tax.
Yep, of the four grocery stores we have located in the city of East Ridge, two of them are in the border region district, two of them are not. One that is the highest producing grocery store, Walmart grocery, they're the number one generator. And then we have the least one, which is down next to the flea market. Effective July 1st, 2017, food tax goes from five cents to four cents, or twenty percent reduction. So for the period July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, just projecting sales best I can, because those figures really are not made available to me, specific store by store, we'll probably lose somewhere in April of $70,000 next year on the, just because of the reduction in the five cents and four cents. We always get the border region sales tax within, let's see, we've got thirty days to submit, and then it's sixty days after that.
We have thirty days to submit our request, and then they send us the information. They have on sixty days for that to determine what we need.
Right, so we got, we reviewed the check buy September 30th. Of course, we got it yesterday, but the next period we'll see a decrease because of that food tax, because that'll be for the period 17 to 18. They are going to be adding, will be adding hopefully, from the new firehouse subs and Dunkin' Donuts. I don't know unless they can really light a fire under that development, the other one which we'll see tomorrow speaks tomorrow. Basically, we'll, we'll see how they go, and they really get off.
So the way I read this is that $412,500 is part of the incentive package we give off the first, in me.
Yes, sir.
$721,453 is the sales tax of the regenerative front toward the crossing.
Yes.
So then...
We don't, yes.
They're part of the sales tax off of Bass Pro.
Bass Pro, tractor boats.
That's the border region amount off of...
Yeah, those, now we get, we still get the countywide sales tax on that. And then next year, we'll probably get, I wonder if they open, the hotels going up, so we get a, you know, sales tax on that, and then the chiflalé.
Hotel, hotel tax.
We get the hotel, hotel tax. The city receives the hotel, hotel tax?
Even the...
We receive the hotel, hotel tax, the property tax, and 1.125% on the countywide sales. We receive those on any hotel that's in the development.
Now, if you recall up end, I don't have the budget numbers in front of me, what was our net on the border region money last year?
Eight thirty-seven.
Eight thirty-seven.
About $80,000. We saw a ten point oh something percent difference.
Says here at 45.
Eight forty-five.
Yes, for the one you sent across the email that I may copy and provide.
Okay, so eight forty-five, it's going to be nine thirty, nine hundred thirty thousand for this year is what we just received, so it is an $85,000 increase.
May I see that, please? Are you catching all the numbers or? I just did that the other day.
I got the same email, I didn't, I didn't see that, maybe I just glossed over it or something, but I...
Okay, I'm thinking the year before, okay. Eight thirty-seven.
So, so it went from eight hundred forty-five thousand fiscal year sixteen to nine thirty fiscal year seventeen.
The phrase I asked that, Mary, it tells us the fact that Kenny were going to be losing on the groceries, and so it's going to be a seventy thousand, eighty-five increase that you disposed of, so.
Hopefully, some of the developments that we're working on, that I'm not going to really announce them at this time, will come to fruition, and if they do, we'll look at higher yield of sales tax dollars coming from the border.
Going up. Not going to run back through it all over again, so we'll just let it lie there. Do you have anything else, Mr. Cagle?
No, sir, that's it.
Mr. Stewart?
Hi.
Ms. Wood, do you have any?
Just said they're starting on Exit 1, and we'll be going at it pretty heavy over the next two hundred and twenty days, so if they're, we'd be careful and cognizant of the surroundings when you go over that I-75. Be a lot of trucks moving in and out of their construction zone. We've already sent a letter off to T.D.O. asking that we be allowed to reduce the speed limit from forty to thirty since that is a construction zone. We haven't received approval yet, hopefully we will.
Yeah, that solid last night, I guess it was, where they have actually started moving dirt on the Exit 1 ramp if you're coming northbound on I-75 right there. So, yeah, it is certainly underway, and it's exciting, and I know the fire station is getting very close. I think Chief Williams posted some pictures the other night of nine shots of what it looks like with it illuminated, and it looks very nice. So a lot of exciting things, those like Dunkin' Donuts and Firehouse Subs are about ready to open, especially the Dunkin' Donuts, look like it's ready to open any time.
Will they hire?
Yeah.
Hire people?
Yeah, so, good stuff, very exciting.
Both of them very got job application, women, hardworking.
Fantastic. So that's exciting. We're going, we're going to work part-time down there. I make the donuts, I make the doggy of it. Alright, well, it is, I don't have really anything else. And so with that, we will move, there is no home business, so we will bypass that and go directly to do business. And the aforementioned item 9A, which will be a public hearing for ordinance number 1055. And this would be rezoning of property located in 4209 Ringel Road, R1 Residential to C2 General Commercial. And having been properly advertised, the public hearing in the, having been published, no, just having been published, we will open the public hearing, and I will ask for Mr. Custer, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just, we talked a little bit about it at the agenda work session, but if you could come just to give a thumbnail sketch of what this is.
This is the property located right across the street from the Fire and Police Service Center, 4209 Ringel Road. Property is currently zone C2. It does have a, about a fifty-foot section width length of the property that is on R1. That section is still R1 because of the, the city, when the city went did the last rezonant down Ringel Road, they didn't follow lot lines, they just said two hundred, it's two hundred feet, you know, some odd distance off, and that's kind of how the maps were drawn.
We didn't do that.
No, no, absolutely not.
I just wanted to make that clear.
But this is, this is, we've encountered this quite a bit really in the last, you know, twelve to twenty-four months, and it's, it's really, when it's come times for people to purchase lenders or have a little bit of heartburn on lending those funds to a nonconformity use, so it's just bringing the whole parcel and conformity and putting it up as own.
Alright, thank you.
Hopefully, for a better development.
Figures across. Alright, thank you, I appreciate that very much. So that is a nice brief explanation. Obviously, council, we will have opportunity to further discuss when we're actually considering the ordinances, or the ordinance, both first and second reading. But if you have any questions now, at a time, certainly you're free to ask those. Okay, I hear none, so I will ask anyone in the audience is, has a comment either for or against, or just for informational purposes, if anyone would like to make a comment, certainly this would be your opportunity, if you'll come to one of the microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. Let's see, none. So with that, we will close this public hearing, and we will proceed to consideration of ordinance number 1055 on first reading.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations on the property located at 4209 Ringel Road, tax amount number 169H-F-017, from R1 Residential District to C2 General Commercial District.
Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance 1055?
Motion to approve ordinance number 1055.
We have motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Yes. That item is approved, we will move to item C, ordinance number 1056.
An ordinance of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, amending ordinance number 671 to amend the East Ridge air pollution control regulations by providing for revised rules for new source approval, increased permit fees, revised ambient air quality standards, and certain housekeeping provisions.
Okay. Again, we talked about this at the last agenda work session, we had a gentleman with us who gave us a, a good overview, a good summary, fairly briefly, Bob Colby, from the Chatty Be Hamilton County Air Protection Commissioner, thank you, sir, who came to us and in about five minutes explained a two-inch thick packet of information. And essentially, the, this is something that all municipalities in Hamilton County are having to deal with. The only substantive change will be the, as far as how it will impact us, is the permit fee will increase from fifty to sixty dollars, is that right? It's a small increase, but again, it's mandated. We are, we are not alone in having to, to approve this revised language. Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance number 1056?
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't see where it's fifty to sixty dollars.
Well, I may have had that wrong.
Oh, okay.
I may have, yes, I, I...
Five to ten dollars.
Five to ten, I'm sorry. Yes, gotcha.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, you're, you're correct, I remember it was incremental, it was an incremental, but I could remember, yeah, could not remember exactly what that was. Alright, do we have, do we have a motion in regard to ordinance 1056?
Motion, or?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we have any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item is approved, item D, resolution 2712.
A resolution of the city council, the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor or the designated manager to enter agreement with AESA Engineering, which gives services with regard to drainage survey design associated with the Western Phase, Phase Four of the Ringel Road, approved by the council.
Gotcha. Yes, AESA Engineering has, is a participant engineer in regard to the water model in TAP 1 and TAP 2, which those three projects together, which each gave or sidewalk improvements enhancements from Bryant Road West to Kingwood, Liburnia Lane. The last city council meeting, got the consensus from the council to obtain a proposal from AESA Engineering to perform the drainage study, which is necessary to be able to size the pipe as well as define points of drainage. Land survey and the design for that portion of Ringel Road, Liburnia, Kingwood, west to the tunnels are actually South Seminole. The land survey stormwater modeling drainage would be fifty-five thousand, sixty dollars for that portion of it. And the other proposal is for the design, this would be preliminary, designed for the right-of-way and final plans at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Once we decide to go forth through this project, then we would enter into a CPI proposal contract with AESA for the construction inspection services, for the construction portion of the project. Just right now, we're just asking for the design, preliminary design for the right-of-way and final design. So this would take us from, actually, we're not looking for, we're not looking at putting sidewalks from South Seminole to Rocky Falls. I think we want to encourage people walking through those tunnels, however, drainage studies would have to take in consideration that area up around the block of tunnels because you do have drainage coming out of it. Often that drainage is going to go down both South Seminole as well as Ringel Road, so we do need to incorporate that portion into the drainage study. So as before, you're for your consideration for approval tonight?
Just three hundred and eighty-five thousand, I thought it would be headed into the construction bit, we get in?
Yes, sir.
We could be done into the...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I will capitalize, yes, what I, what we will do is, this will come out of our fund balance at this time, and then when we, when I, when I go forth with a twenty-year audit sheet, then we'll look at the construction and the design, the study, as well as the CEI, all packed into one, as we do for Exit 1. I don't want to do little piece here, ear, here, join them all together.
Since we have to buy all four of these together?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to be able to do all this, buying money into one bond, or we going to have to borrow it?
The grant monies we, we have left to take in consideration, we expect, we have to keep separate files and figures on every portion of that phase, phase budget, phase one, two, three, and four.
Maybe though they're allowed to combine it all into one?
Exactly.
Okay, so then our portion?
Am I direct on that, or am I wrong?
Um, part of it, we have different separate budgets when we get to construction.
Right.
Because they are allowing us to take the NEPA, the design, and right-of-way at a ninety-five five, which means we only pay five percent, and then when we get to construction, it's at an eighty-twenty, which means we pay twenty percent. So we're actually allowed to do the portions we've already paid for and not been reimbursed in the TAP, and can submit those for reimbursement at a ninety-five five, so...
The question was asked, though, can we, we do not have to keep separate files on all phase three, one, two, and three?
I have to keep, I have to keep all of them, yes.
Okay.
So we're going to be able to buy it all into one bond?
One, because...
It's one, it's one contract.
Eventually, we can, yes. Eventually, we can, because what I can do is, is I can combine at the end when I do one, if we've done previous bonds, I can incorporate that into the, into one bond for the purpose of possibly low interest rates. rates.
That's kind of new, but all preparation fees are not a thing that are really common.
That's one, that's one of the things I'd be looking at, yeah. I mean, you know, it's like anything else. That's true. But you go out of the bond issue, usually you have one with one and a half percent of the issue going through the, going through the municipal bond form. You get that for, what was the amount that we paid, seventy-five hundred dollars? Catching it.
I think it was a little bit more than that.
Did you see where I put it?
Yes.
I think I understand your question a little bit better. It's going to be one contract for the construction, so.
How, how four phases?
Well, no.
Three phases.
Three or just a, just a grant.
Okay.
It's one contract because it saves us money in the long run having one contractor doing the whole thing, even though they'll do it in phases, it's one contract.
Now, when I do a bond issue on that, and the interest rate, let's say, is two-point-five-five, and when we get time to do phase four of reconstruction and the interest rate is two-point-two-five, then you may want to refund. Yes, and one and two-five-five for interest rate. It could be higher. Who knows in a year what Federal Reserve is going to do with interest rates?
All right, do we have a, a motion in regard to resolution twenty-seven-twelve? Got a little Q and A?
I've got the motion, we have heard of resolution twenty-seven-twelve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. That item is approved. Moving on to item E, which is the grant consent agenda, which includes resolution two-seven-one-three, two-seven-one-four, two-seven-one-five, and two-seven-one-six.
Resolution number two-seven-one-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the City of East Ridge to participate in the State of Tennessee Fiscal Year two thousand and eighteen Recycling Rebate Matching Grant Program. Resolution number two-seven-one-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for an acceptance of the United States Tennis Association Assistance Grant. Resolution number two-seven-one-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the City of East Ridge approving the application for an acceptance of the Tennessee American Water Firefighting Support Grant Program. Resolution number two-seven-one-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for an acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen quarter security grant.
Do we have a motion in regard to item E, the grant consent agenda?
Motion.
Do we have a motion? We say, Mr. Soul, Mr. Kegel, second. Okay. All right. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item F, resolution two-seven-one-seven.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to approve the attached change order from J and J Contractors, Inc., with regard to construction of fire station number two.
Okay, this change order in the amount of two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars is for installation of three LED light fixtures with emergency backup connection to the generator under the main entrance canopy of the building to the fire station number two, same comps. For the architect, these light fixtures are required by code, in fact, to be allocated with fire exits. Originally, the original change order came in, they were asking for a date. Kenny Quester went out there to look at that and felt that we would pull the board on that, three of them were, we saw what needed for the front, so we went ahead and composed this change order for the amount of two-thousand-four-eighty-one.
No one of these lights were required by code and were overhugged and not put in with the original bid?
I'm sorry?
I said, no of these lights were required by code. These lights were over, overhugged and not put in with the original bid.
Pursuant to the architect's email, that's the last page of your agenda packet, under date September twenty-second, these fixtures were left off of the contract on payments inadvertently, quote, quote.
Obviously, we need them.
We need them.
So it's advisable to move forward.
I would say that, like I said, the first, first one that came in, well, that's about seven or eight thousand dollars, wasn't it, Kenny?
Yes, sir.
And that also included a gate and so forth. Basically pared us down to what we felt was actually required by the code, that's pretty infighting.
So we're asking for an exceed two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars?
Correct, sir.
We've loaded our quotes from two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-nine to two-thousand-and-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight for the back.
Two-thousand-four-eighty-one, not to exceed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we approve the change order? Yes, sir.
We do continue to any future development that we do. Is there error in omissions in your contract that says who is liable for these types of things? Or do we have? Not on this, no. On this? No, because they have now each of the project. Because this is not the first voter side. Correct. As a matter of fact, change orders, this is their major change order, we've had to fend on credit. But the total on this is twenty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars. Which really, when you look at a one-point-four-nine-seven, it's not a lot of money, but still a change order.
This, this, Mr. Kegel, comments we've already heard, and I think the last change order was pertaining to what the, how the fact that we weren't, we did anticipate booking up power to the building.
Yep, that was four-thousand-six-oh-six. First one was twenty-one thousand, seventeen thousand, seven oh four was the first one. However, I will say, the first one, we did run into some underground issues on that one, so portion of that. First one, sixteen thousand, seven oh four, was something that was unforeseen, but the others were not.
So I appreciate the fact that we're keeping a running total of what these change orders are costing us. Do we have any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
That item is approved. Item G, discussion on potentially taking action on canceling the October twelfth meeting. We know for sure two won't be here. I have tentative plans to not be here. It is fall break, the only time, other than spring break, the only time, at least during the fall time period, if there's opportunity for a little travel. I would be in favor of canceling that meeting. That's, that's me. Okay. Well, I will, I don't do it often, but I'll roll that out in the form of a motion and move to cancel the October twelfth meeting. All right, you said you, second. All right. If we could, roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes, sir. Not, not for a forum, of course, but for a vote, yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Item H, request from the American Legion Post ninety-five for the city hang-a-van or Ringel Road advertising their annual barbecue on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Have the motion approved, please.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
That item is approved. The last item is something that is kind of a, a return to a previous conversation. I had spoken with Coach Neely at the high school back in the spring, and we, at that point, of course, we always have a little bit of money in the budget to distribute to the schools. She had asked if we could do the distribution to the high school for the purpose of helping their, their athletics hall of fame. They have a induction every year and get plaques and all of that. And so we did that, and I think the way we actually ended up approving the dispensation of, of funds is basically just a check went to each school for whatever purpose they saw fit. Well, the money that was supposed to go to the high school for the athletics hall of fame ended up going into their, I guess, general, general fund, essentially. And so it is not available for use for the athletics hall of fame. Now, we have, since that time, we have moved into a new fiscal year. We have a new allotment of, of money. And so I would like to see, if we could, to go ahead and approve five hundred dollars to East Ridge High School for the purpose of the athletic hall of fame. They're having an induction ceremony next week. I think they're going to, at the football game, at halftime, honor the inductees. I know, I think there are ten, maybe, total inductees. Several of those are off of the state championship softball team from ninety-seven, I believe it was.
And the volleyball team, championship, too.
Yeah, so I mean, some of the best athletic teams East Ridge has ever had, regardless of sport. So I would, would love to see us do this, if, if counsel would be willing to do so.
I thought it was a formal motion.
I ain't rolling it out there in a formal fashion. This may be a record, two, two motions in one meeting for many.
Now, last year, we gave that five hundred dollars.
Right.
You had to go into general fund, you had to make that decision.
Right.
Who we making it out to this year?
I, I would say we will make it out to the.
First, why I'm asking this, because, correct me right here, if I'm wrong. We had a lady that night at the office spoke to the PTA. Anybody that donated like that, owe to that, too, subrude in the school, it has to go through general fund. So it would be better if we must donate this to an athletic boosters club and then let them pay for their funding or donate to the PTA and let PTA pay for, keep it from going through the general fund of the school.
Right. And that's a good question. That's a good question.
In that way, that I was good that other night? Yep.
So.
I'm sure the other three.
Well, and I, they forget, I think, I think there may be less time sensitive than this one, considering it's next week. So that's the reason I wanted it tonight.
Who does Kegel?
I'm sorry?
Who does Kegel?
I have no idea.
We'll read those names, we'll check the Kegel.
And that's the thing, I'm not sure, I don't know exactly what the money will go for, whether it will be for the plaques or what, what part of their thing they will do. If we can have the motion this way. Okay, I'm, I'm going to restate my motion. I would like to appropriate five hundred dollars for East Ridge High School to use toward their athletic hall of fame. The check will be made out to the appropriate party upon checking with the school, finding out exactly how we should make the check, how we should make it pay up. If that's okay.
If they want that time.
Yes, sir. I'll talk to their finance person to find out how to write the check. Because we have to be real specific, by not give money out. So I'll talk to theirs. I'll talk to their finance.
I appreciate that. Appreciate the question that led to the conversation. Because it is, that's exactly what happened last year, is we ended up sending the, the money and it just went.
We had a girl that was making them, so.
So whatever accomplishes the, the end goal, so that, that is my motion. So we have a, we have a second. Are there any other questions? So obviously, I would encourage everyone to come out to the remaining football games, but in particular, that one, and you'll get to see the, those who are being inducted into the East Ridge High School Athletic Hall of Fame.
Three more, three more. Kelly, about that, Anderson Kelly, six-hundred-five on this one. Four, should be a good ball. Yep.
This Friday?
Tomorrow?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Oh, okay.
We got four starters out, including our best player.
All right. With that, we have the roll call, please.
Ms. Moore-Soul?
Yes.
Councilmember Kegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you all very much for being here tonight, and we look forward to, to seeing you next time. We, again, we did cancel the October twelfth meeting, so the next regular council meeting will be October twenty-sixth. Thank you all for being here, this meeting is adjourned.